Session. I need a motion to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only-
I'm sorry, Mr. Lyons, we need a motion to return to open session before we can certify-
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I skipped that one, sorry. I need a motion to return to open session. All of those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Now, let's certify. I apologize, Ms. Drake. I need a motion to certify to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. All those in favor say aye?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lyons, certification is a roll call vote.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
This is my first time doing this.
I know. I'm here to help you out.
I'm glad you're here. All right, roll call, Ms. Drake.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Abstain.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Franklin?
I wanted you to ask for that motion. I move that we expel student A from Montgomery County schools.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Abstain.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes. Am I back on track now?
Yeah.
At this time, the school board will, excuse me. At this time, the school board welcomes the opportunity for the public to address this board on matters pertaining to education in Montgomery County. The guidelines for this are as follows. The session is to last 30 minutes. A maximum of three minutes per citizen or organization is allowed. When you step up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. We have four people who are signed up currently. I will start with the first one, and then call them in succeeding order. First up is Ellen, is it Cannelli? Chanelly, thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Ellen Chanelly, and I live at 1400 Glade Wood Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm a substance abuse counselor at Virginia Tech. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I'm very much in favor of having the option of a structured study hall at PHS for several reasons. I believe it's a wonderful way we can engage, encourage, and empower our high school students. Universities, employers, medical professionals, mental health care providers, and countless other organizations encourage our high school students to get involved after school and to join extracurricular activities. Students are told to engage in their communities after school. So, students do as they are told by the adults in their lives who they trust. They find jobs, they join theater, debate, student government, DECA, academic competition teams, and they try out for their JV and varsity athletic teams. They're excited about these activities and look forward to learning and developing new schools while representing their high schools. This excitement unfortunately can sometimes give way to students feeling overwhelmed, stressed out, torn between their priorities, physically tired and exhausted, and left wondering why they cannot keep up with everything. They may begin sacrificing their rest and sleep. They learn ways to complete homework assignments in their vans, trucks, cars, on school buses, in hallways, during lunch hours, in locker rooms, or even in parking lots. Even worse than this, they give up sometimes. They can disengage with their schoolwork. They must let certain assignments slide because they don't-
(coughs)
They may not understand what the teachers went over in class. The resilient students will dig down further to persevere. They'll text each other frantically trying to find out what's due the next day, or what notes they may have missed in class during eighth period when they were headed to a game, or an academic competition of some sort. Not all of these students feel empowered at our high school. Some of them feel overwhelmed. Not all students feel encouraged either. Some of them may even feel betrayed by the adults they trusted when they were told to sign up for after-school academic activities. The good news is, though, many Blacksburg High School students could benefit by having a chunk of time during school hours where they're allowed to focus on their academics, where they can get instruction in subjects where they are not able to keep up with, and when they can ask questions and get support. The good news is also, this is the exact way we can encourage them to do their best. They can engage with their work when they are not stressed out, outside, in hallways, or in parking lots. Here, they can actually get some rest and sleep in the evening knowing their schoolwork was finished in study hall. It's a perfect way we can give, let students live up to their own expectations and our expectations of them. Here is one way we can empower our young people and to accomplish their goals. Can we please consider putting this simple option in our high school at no cost, and let's just see if it can help our students? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Dave Chanelly. Did I get it right?
My name is Dave Chanelly. I live at 1400 Glade Wood Drive in Blacksburg. I'm the Director of Track and Field and Cross Country at Virginia Tech. I've been in that position for 14 years. I've been a coach or teacher at the collegiate level or high school level for 34 years. And I believe you have something here that is a good idea, as far as having a structured study hall during the school day. We have that over at Virginia Tech for my students. I have 85 students in my program. And during my 14-year tenure, it seems like this idea to have a structured study hall gives these students an opportunity to have a controlled environment to be able to go to, to get tutoring, to study, or to catch up on work. And I think this is just a great idea at no cost. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Muscatello.
You'll probably know where I live by now. Andrea Muscatello, 29802, Shadow Lake Road in Blacksburg. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for considering the request for structured study halls at Blacksburg High School. At the outset of this process, the PTSO engaged in its own fact-finding process. Using the U.S. News National Rankings of High Schools, we identified the top 10 ranked high schools in Virginia. These schools are probably very well-known to each of you. Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, George Mason High School, James Madison High School, Langley High School, Oakton High School, McLean High School, W.T. Woodson, Yorktown, West Springfield, and George C. Marshall High School. Because of their notable achievements in our region, we also added Hidden Valley High School and Cave Spring High School to our list. We called the administration of each of these schools and asked some basic questions about the structure of their school day. We specifically asked what kind of schedule they had, did they offer study hall, did the students have access to teachers during study hall, and was remediation offered during study hall? Of the schools polled, 10 of the 12 were on a hybrid block or AB block schedule. The other two were on a block schedule. 11 of the 12 schools had some form of study hall. Interestingly, eight of the schools had an alternative study hall option that allowed all students to receive additional help. Of the schools polled, four of the schools had a study hall course selection option. 11 of the 12 schools indicated that the students had access to teachers during study hall or alternate study hall. Two of the schools offered remediation during study hall. Looking at the success of other schools in our state is an excellent first step towards raising all of our high schools towards national rankings. Being in the top-ranked high schools is a known asset to our local economy, resulting in increased tax revenue and the availability of increased funding for education. Having some form of study hall for students can be done without costing additional tax dollars, but it could go a long way for increasing the tax dollars available for education in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Robbie Jones.
Good evening. I'm Robbie Jones. I live at 996 Cole Hollow Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here tonight to invite you to Put Kids, the Put Kids First Rally in Richmond, Virginia on April the 18th. If you don't feel like driving, VEA has chartered some buses, and they'll take you there and back. I have left some of the sign-up sheets, if you choose to go, with Ms. Drake, and I invite you and everyone in the audience to join us at Richmond for this rally. It is about time that we do put our kids first, and thank you.
Thank you. That is all that I have signed up for public address right at this point. I will ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to step up and speak to the board at this time.
Hi, my name is Andrea Sharp Robinson. I live at 4261 Prices Fork Road. I was here a couple weeks ago as Marty Graham recently filled our district's location. I wasn't going to speak tonight because the study hall, I just wanted to come and listen and learn, but I feel like there's a couple things that need to be thought about as well. First, I would like to say, would you agree, and I know it's rhetorical because you can't respond, but would you agree the goal is to give each child the best education and opportunity for them, all of them, K through 12? I believe everyone on the school board would say yes, as well as the parents in this room. Then, working as a learning specialist in the students' academic and athletic services area at Virginia Tech, I have the opportunity to work with athletes from all over the country and international athletes as well. They are required to have study hall. That is just a mandated thing because they need the time to learn, because they are athletes, and they're doing a service to the college that they are attending as well. So, if those athletes need study hall, why wouldn't high school athletes potentially benefit from a study hall as well? Besides athletes, regular students would benefit from a study hall as well. Students that are not on a college track, not everybody's college prep, they would benefit as well. That would give them time, extra time, to work on career and technical ed, or to beef up learning skills that maybe they need to be better prepared for life ahead of them. Study hall should be an opportunity that is available to everybody. It is successful in a college environment, and students that want to have study hall should be, have the opportunity to have study hall. It's not a requirement. It's something that our school and other schools could potentially work out as well. I do not know about other schools. I know about Blacksburg High School. And I know our administration has worked out a plan that would work for those students. I think it would be terrific, it would be a county-wide option for all students and all parents to have that for their child, especially considering a time change that will be being considered next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing no one, public address is closed. Next on the agenda is our consent items. If any board member has anything to pull from consent, please speak now. Any discussion? Otherwise, consent items are considered approved. Personnel report. I need a motion to accept the personnel report.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye? Aye? Those opposed? Aye. Personnel report is approved. Financial report. Need to pay the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Bills have been paid. I now turn it over to Ms. Blackburn for superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. My first item this evening is the resolution, Put Kids First. The board was first acquainted with this opportunity through the board update, and then with the VEA and MCEA Representative Robbie Jones spoke to it at your last meeting. So, this evening, we have presented the Put Kids First Campaign, which is a campaign designed to mobilize citizens throughout the Commonwealth to ask Virginia's elected leaders to make education a priority in Virginia. The MCEA has endorsed this campaign and has asked the school board to approve the attached resolution. It's brought to you this evening for your action.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, board members, any discussion on this?
Great-looking program.
Very good. Just point of clarification for me. What exactly, I want to understand exactly why it's called the Business Honor Roll.
Something different. I'm sorry, this is the Put Kids First Resolution? Do we have a- Do we have something on?
I have-
I uploaded the wrong, I uploaded the right resolution with the wrong title.
Okay. That's why I was curious.
We'll update that title. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, no problem. I was just curious to disconnect there. So, can we approve? We'll approve, so everything else is correct other than the title? Is that, okay. So, we'll approve that with the title change?
I'm sorry, in order to make that clarification to the motion, then Mr. Ivers and Ms. Franklin have to do, amend the motion for it to be-
So amended.
Do we need to vote on the amendment, or on the change? Motion to make that change? Okay, so we need to, any discussion on the amendment to the resolution? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So, the amendment is approved. So, now, back to discussion. Any other further comments about the resolution? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? The resolution is approved.
Next item is a grant proposal. Virginia Tech has requested $449,634 from the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth for a region-wide project to study the factors influence the use of electronic nicotine delivery systems among the youth in southwest Virginia. Montgomery County Public Schools' participation in the project will provide full funding for the 2016 District Administration in, of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Included will be several additional questions addressing e-cigarette use. Item is presented for your approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Grant proposal is approved.
The next item is a request for categorical appropriations reclassification for 2014-2015. The Montgomery County School Board, at its meeting on March 3rd, approved a request to the Board of Supervisors for a categorical appropriations reclassification to the school operating budget for fiscal year 2014-15. That should not say approved, you're being asked to approve. This request is for categorical reclassification of funds that were received as part of our carryover appropriation. The appropriation was initially approved in the budget by the Board of Supervisors and included $127,600 for two reserved teacher units to address class size issues, since we had reduced 11 FTEs from our original budget. Also included in the carryover appropriation was $75,272 as undesignated funds to meet other potential needs of the school division. The two reserved teacher units have not been required to address class size. However, there is a great need in our division for additional school buses to replace our aging fleet, and it's something that we've not been able to attend to as much as we would have liked to in the past. So, I'm recommending this evening that we request that the supervisors reclassify the $202,872 from instructional category to the transportation category for the purchase of two additional buses and bus safety equipment, to the extent that that money will extend.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, board members?
Yes, I would just like to say how much this, how important this is, you know? As I've said many times, when I first came on this board, buses were in dire need, breaking down, not starting, and I'm starting to see those same patterns starting to happen with buses not starting. And one of the other things was paying our employees, and that's another big issue we're going to have during this budgetary time. So, those are two things that we need to be very conscious of, because we won't be able to get our children to school safely and on time, and if we don't pay our employees, we won't be able to also support our children.
To ask just one question, I think this is an appropriate time, since it's about buses and buying them. I read this week in Roanoke that they're purchasing buses that can run on propane gas, am I right?
Alternative fuel, yes.
Yeah, $8,000 more dollars per bus, but they'll pay that off in two years with the savings. Have we ever looked into maybe doing that, or?
We started to evaluate that, based on the information I'd been reading from Roanoke County as well.
Right.
To see if it's actually a savings for us.
Would we wait on purchasing these buses, or just go with this?
I would consider it a long-range plan, because we haven't gathered all our data. We have a fairly competitive fuel bid that we participate in with our county, so we're not having the same issue right at the moment in terms of fuel costs being much lower than what we're paying for it.
Okay.
But we are looking at alternative fuel as an, as an option.
Any other discussion, board members? All those in favor, please say aye? Aye? Any opposed? The categorical appropriation reclassification is approved.
Next item again is presented for your approval. It's a minor revision in the calendar for school year 1516. The calendar committee convened on Thursday, January 29th, 2015. We had new information at that point that Virginia Tech has scheduled a home football game on Friday, October 9th, 2015. The administration asked the committee to consider a revision to the already-approved 1516 school calendar and the 12-month calendars. What it would do is turn, and October 28th, an all early release day, has been moved to October 9th, and remains an all early release day. So, the adjustments to the calendar that we're proposing this evening are October 28th, an all early release day, parent-teacher conference week changed to October 19th through the 23rd, and October 15th, an all early release date, has been moved to October 22nd, and remains an all early release day. I probably totally confused you, but we have the, we have the calendar expert here. Basically, we're making some adjustments that meet teacher needs and that will offset the Virginia Tech schedule for the game.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Calendar revision is approved.
Next, we have the draft of the 2016-2017 school and 12-month calendars, and I'm going to ask Mr. McElandro to come and tell you the process and some of the key points that are included in this calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board. Calendar committee met and decided on the 1617 calendar based on certain criteria that the board had set before, that the semester end prior to the holiday break, winter break, we met that, and the number of days are split between the two semesters more evenly now is 8991, so it's a fairer split between the two. The number of workdays are the same as they are for this year, for next year, for the middle school and elementary school and high schools, and early release dates for those. And we will end school, if no days are, if no snow days are missed, on May 18th, a little earlier than before. Hopefully. And we begin, first day for students is August 9th. It's a little earlier as well.
Can we hold you responsible for that May 18th date?
I have no control of the weather.
Just a question for me. I know we've, we've never had this happen, obviously, in the last couple of years, but if we were to have a tremendous amount of snow days prior to the, prior to the break, how would we deal with that issue? Would we still end the semester?
I think we'd have to see just how, how much of a discrepancy there is, and it would be brought back to the board if we were going to make that kind of adjustment to the calendar. It would be a very disruptive adjustment to make.
Okay.
So, we'd want to be very cautious, and would, hopefully, the weather trends won't change.
Yes, ma'am. The other thing is, there are some days before the Christmas holiday that could be used as well. I mean, there are some days in there that the students are out, that they could report if, if, if we had to go down that road.
You really want a mutiny on your hands, don't you?
Yeah, I just, those days are there if needed.
So, is the reason for the August 9th because of trying to make those semesters more even?
Yes, ma'am.
And eventually, that's going to reset and go back to like August 13th or 14th, I think.
Exactly.
I know, we have a leap year to deal with that year as well, so. My wife asked the same question. She told me to vote against this, starting on August 9th.
I know this, it's an early start, but I think Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin will agree that since the first semester now ends before the winter holiday, it has been a really great benefit for kids.
Yes, sir.
Well, what we did previously was, they came back from winter holiday, a week later, they started their testing. That was brutal.
Yes, sir.
And I really think that this calendar fits the new program very well.
Yes, sir. The calendar committee was unanimous in that.
Yeah.
I do agree. I just think sometimes, no matter how early you get out, when community people see that early go-back, they forget about how early they got out. All they see is how early they're going back. And it's not only parents, I mean, I hear it from teachers and everyone else. That's the only thing that concerns me about that early go-back date, is because, like I said, it's, it's never seen what you did the year, you know, the year before in the extra time, or, so I just like to make sure that that's a-
How uneven are the semesters, like in this school year, right now, between?
They're going to be, yes, sir. It's, I believe it's 8990 for this year, but again, it's trying to balance those built-in snow days as well. We have six built-in snow days, and so to balance those two, two sides and put those days in there as well is difficult to do. The other reminder is, is again, that they will be out by the end of May, hopefully, weather. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. And they'll have June and July, the whole months of June and July.
Oh, I get it, I understand, but-
Yes, ma'am.
I got that.
It is definitely a mental shake.
Yes.
All right.
Presented for information tonight, and we'll bring it back for action at your next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have a lost, a lost connection, but we're moving on to the instructional coaching update, and I have my notes in here somewhere.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn, and members of the board.
Michael, wait just one second. You're getting ahead of me, okay? Like to ask Ms. Weaver, if she would, to introduce our folks from Christiansburg Middle School today, who are going to be doing our instructional presentation, and this is part of our ongoing effort to keep you apprised of the kinds of things that are happening in our schools. Jennifer?
Good evening. I'm excited this evening to have Michael Bathgate, who's an assistant principal at Christiansburg Middle School, Jennifer McGee, who's our instructional coach, secondary math coach at Christiansburg Middle School, and Karen Jones, who's a math teacher and department chair at Christiansburg Middle School. If you remember, in the fall, we were able to bring the Christiansburg High School team to talk about how coaching works in their building- to talk about how coaching works in their building, so we're gonna try and replicate the same experience for you this evening to show you that there are certainly some things in common with the coaching experience between the high school and middle school, but also some differences. Wanted to remind you that everything we do is grounded in the model for effective instruction, and so we wanna be sure that whether it's the work of administrators, teachers, or coaches, that we're all trying to make sure that we're improving the experience of all of these pieces of the pie for our students. Also wanted to remind you that our six-year plan addresses implementing the model in our classrooms to make sure that we're improving instruction for all of our students, to make sure that we're using best research, and that we're monitoring to make sure that what we're doing is working well for our students. And one of the ways we're able to give teachers really effective and ongoing regular feedback are through our coaches, they provide a lot of job-embedded professional development. You've heard us talk a lot about how ineffective it is for teachers to go to one-shot professional development sessions that are never followed up, they never have a chance to practice or implement them in their classrooms, so coaches are able to provide the ongoing feedback, so it really is job-embedded. And I wanted to remind you that these are some of the responsibilities of our coaches. As I mentioned, you'll see it looks a little bit different from the high school to the middle school, but there are some things that all of our coaches do, professional development being an important part of that. They work with our teachers to plan and teach, to look at data, to monitor how students are doing, and they've also played a really important role in helping us implement division-wide initiatives. Obviously, our focus, our ongoing focus has been on engagement and trying to get our students as engaged as possible in the classroom. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bathgate.
Now, Michael.
All right, let's try this again. My name is Michael Bathgate, since the principal at CMS. Jennifer McGee has helped us a lot this year. Starting the school year, we had a long-term sub in one of our math positions, and Jennifer McGee was able to coach and work with this long-term sub to make sure that...
Give me this mic. To the microphone.
I'm so sorry. To work and to help this math, the long-term substitute follow the curriculum map, guide this long-term substitute to find a teacher for that position. Now, we weren't able to find a teacher till December, and she was able to transition from the long-term sub to the new teachers extremely smoothly, so the kids didn't have any lapse in their education in the math program. Also, this year, with data, she gives us any kind of data that we're asking, such as benchmarks, the Iowa test data, the SMIs, grades, and teacher's feedback. Two years ago, when we had to do math placements, we had approximately 50 students that we had to move from different math classes, either moving from, usually it's moving from algebra to Math 8. Few that we had moved from Math 8 to algebra to challenge them. This year, we had about 15. So it's a great improvement from Jennifer giving us that data that we can look at and we can make the right choices for them. Also, this year, we have challenged the students appropriately. We found them, from her data that gave me, that the, they weren't over, you know, overwhelmed the students this year, they were placed correctly, and it's such an important tool in talking to parents and having that data in front of us so we know where the students struggle at and where they need help at. Ms. McGee's also had been a mentor to our teachers, looking at the curriculum maps, making sure teachers follow the curriculum maps. She's been in the classrooms, working with teachers, doing engagement activities with our students, co-planning. She meets with me once a week to talk about the students, where are the students having trouble at, what do we need to do to make our students succeed, especially on the SOL test. She's also talked to students, she's held conferences with our math students, with the teachers, with the parents. She's talked to, to students and parents about additional support, such as Math 180, SOLR, Boys and Girls Clubs, and she even used herself to do some pull-outs to get the kids who really struggle in math and talk with them and see their weaknesses, and then going back to the core teachers and letting them know as well. Lastly, she's part of our student achievement team to give us updates, continual updates on where are these kids at, and how she can work with them and work with us to make sure that we get these kids caught up and become successful at CMS. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. McGee. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer McGee, and I'm the mathematics coach at CMS. I would like to share with you details regarding the exciting things that are happening for students at CMS with our intervention programs. Math 180 is a middle school math intervention program from Scholastic that helps students with foundational math concepts that include multiplication, division, fractions, and decimals. During last school year, 43 students at CMS were enrolled in Math 180. The expected growth for an eighth-grade student during a school year is 50 quantiles. Thirty-five of those 43 students last year exceeded their expected growth of 50 quantiles. During this school year, 76 students are enrolled in Math 180. Thirty-eight of those students have already exceeded their expected yearly growth of 50 quantiles between the fall and January administration of SMI. SMI is an adaptive assessment that monitors student growth through Algebra I. And also displayed for you, I have a snapshot of some student quotes on their thoughts Finally, I would like to share with you some details regarding our Reflex intervention program. Reflex is a fact fluency program that utilizes games to assess and help students develop fluency in basic multiplication and division facts. CMS was able to purchase a school site license, and we implemented Reflex as a sixth-grade intervention. Students are working with Reflex approximately 35 minutes per day, or, sorry, approximately 15 minutes per day on an average of three days per week. Numerous students are utilizing Reflex outside of the school day, and data shows that students are logging in from home, not only at night, but also on weekends, over holiday breaks and snow days. The number of fluent facts gained by sixth-grade students over the past two weeks alone is 3,727. Nineteen students logged in and worked from home during the recent snow days. I would now like to introduce you to Ms. Karen Jones. Karen Jones is a seventh-grade mathematics teacher at CMS. She is also our mathematics department chair and teaches our seventh-grade algebra classes.
Thank you. You have heard about the statistics, the data, and successes that our students have achieved through our math specialists. I wanna also highlight for you the human side. As you know, your biggest resource for achieving student successes, besides the students themselves, lies in your teachers. I stand here to represent all of the math teachers as I share my story on how math specialists have impacted my teaching and my students' successes. I began teaching at CMS a little over eight years ago, a year when our school was in trouble with our math scores. But with this trouble came extra support. We had the county math supervisor, Dr. Salz, in our school and in our classrooms, and we had Cedric Williams, who was hired to be our math lead, and together they served as coaches and showed us the goals we needed to achieve and the map on how we needed to get there. They were in our classes, supporting our lessons and our students, and together, we were successful, and we achieved the lofty goals that we had set for our students. And so they went away. They went to help in other areas of need, and I continued on in my new teacher ignorance, and I realize now that for a while, I felt adrift. Even though I was surrounded by good teachers, I was missing the long-term math goals and the direction I needed to help our students achieve these goals. And then the county put a math specialist in our school, albeit part-time, shared among all the middle schools, and again, I started to be able to see the bigger picture and to have support for our students' success. And I did everything you wanted me to do as a teacher. I continued my education, and I worked hard, and I engaged my students in meaningful lessons, and others saw that what I was doing was good, and they asked me to be the math department chair, and I said, yes. And then I said to myself, I'm not sure what that means. I was fortunate by that time that we had a full-time math specialist at CMS, and Mrs. McGee, who had worked closely with the previous department chair, had given me the direction and support I needed to fill my responsibilities. She stepped in when I needed help. As you know, my status as department chair doesn't come with extra time, it doesn't come with extra planning or extra hours in my day, just more responsibility. So I rely heavily on Mrs. McGee to help us every day so that I can both continue teaching in my classroom and reach out and support other teachers. She helps me remind, she helps remind me of deadlines, she helps me let the deadlines exist. She helps me with meeting agendas, purchasing decisions, and so much more. One of the most crucial things she does for me is that she designs activities for our department meetings, where teachers are asked to analyze our data, not just look at our data, but actually analyze our data in a way that's meaningful to us, to make connections of where our students are now and how we can better assist them in achieving our goals. In this way, she models the engaging and meaningful lessons, just as we should be doing in our classrooms. And as good as all this is for me, as the department chair, it's what she does for me as a classroom teacher that is most important. It's about the collaboration. She is our eyes, she is our ears, she's our voice, and she's our legs. She's a better clone of me, and I can send her out to do the many tasks and the, and finding things that I need. She helps with sharing lessons between grades and between teachers. She'll come into a classroom and see a teacher doing something good, and not only does she share it with other teachers who can use that exact lesson, she understands how she can share that down or up a grade level or two, so that we can all share in that success. She collaborates with individual teachers, facilitating successful research-based instruction strategies, emphasizing student engagement. She works with teachers in their classroom to develop and deliver effective lessons and strengthens teachers' understanding of the content and effective mathematics teaching practices that allow all students to reach our high standards. She co-teaches in the classroom with us to enable smaller group work, and to help groups work on specific areas of need, or even take the whole class so that me as a teacher, the teachers, can work with our individual students. She assists in test development, midterm and final exams for our ESE classes, common assessments, simulations, and assists in the test administration, the SMI, the Iowa tests, common assessments. And she helps with our short and long-range planning. With vertical alignment, she helps articulate to teachers the prior knowledge that our students come to us with, or hopefully should come to us with, and the future standards that impact our teaching. She is always our motivator and our cheerleader. It's because of our math specialist that we have what you see in your, in our slides here. Students who are engaged in meaningful activities through effective research-based lessons with manipulatives that are understood and used by the teachers in an investigative manner to build understanding for the student, to allow them to make their own connections of the concepts presented, and with resources that are shared among the teachers. Over the years, I've seen the successes of our students and how far we have come since that first year I taught, and I believe that these successes have been achieved as a direct response to the extra support that math specialists bring to our teaching. I can see clearly the future of where our students are going and how we're gonna help them get there, because I have a math specialist to help me. So on behalf of all the math teachers, we thank you for continuing to support and use the math specialists in our schools to help our students succeed.
Wanna thank Michael and Jennifer and Karen for sharing a little bit about what's going on at Christiansburg Middle School, and invite the board, if they have any questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to entertain them.
Is 180 in every one of our middle schools?
Yes, 180 is in all of our middle schools, but why don't you come up and tell them, because you're working with them directly.
And are they working with coaches in the other three middle schools?
There is not currently a coach at Blacksburg Middle School, but yes, classroom teachers that teach Math 180 do directly work with the coaches at the other three middle schools.
And what about Reflex?
Reflex is currently at all of the other middle schools, yeah, yes. The other middle schools, however, have licenses that were purchased by the school division, and I believe that CMS is the only school that has an actual site license. Many of the elementary schools have a site license, but I believe that we're the only middle school.
Yet the other middle schools have Reflex, but no?
Yes, sir.
Site license?
Yes, sir.
Exactly does that mean? No site license versus a license?
A certain number of slots available for students. The school division purchased a certain number of Reflex licenses, and those were divided out amongst the middle schools. I worked with Mr. Bathgate and Mr. Gertson to use school funds to purchase our site license, so that we were able to implement it as an entire grade-level intervention rather than having a small number of students participate.
Isn't 180 something we're also using in our high schools?
It is available for high school use, yes.
Yes.
And, and we're using it in all four high schools?
We're not, we're using it with different populations. It is available in all four high schools.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It was great to see the comments from the students, and you've, you've touched a little bit with Mr. Iverson's questions. My question is, what challenges do you see, or do you have, as far as making, implementing this to the whole population?
Honestly, the answer to that would be funding. Looking at the student population that CMS will have next year and the number of licenses that are available, it is highly likely that we will be underserving the students that would need access to Math 180.
And the same for the site license for the other schools?
Yes.
So could we see what that figure is, so that we can?
Yes, I have Jonathan's wish list already on my desk. It includes calculators and lots of different things that are very essential, but that are definitely funding obstacles sometimes.
Yes.
Which of our secondary schools have full-time coaches and which have the part-time?
Auburn, Charlottesville, and Christiansburg all have full-time math coaches.
And how is that determined, where we would place full-time?
Jennifer, you might wanna speak to the bigger picture.
It was allocated based on need. We had three schools that were in mourning at the time, and so they had to receive top priority, so that's how they were allocated. We are looking in the future, as we have schools, we were able to move off that list last year. We've spread out the responsibilities of the coaches a little bit. The AHS coach has been helping at CHS, and we've been spreading that out a little bit. So our long-term goal is to have support everywhere.
When, when will we see or start to see the successes of what the coaches are implementing in these programs?
We saw it last year with our two high schools, Auburn High School and Eastern Montgomery High School, becoming fully accredited. I think that you heard from Dr. Sears, he thought that one of the top reasons that CHS made so much progress and came so very close was due to their instructional coach, and Mr. Naughton, Mr. Polly would say the same thing.
Okay. I thought so. Thank you.
Anything else, board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, Jennifer, and Karen, thanks so much for sharing with us this evening. Our next item is best practices and expectations for secondary school schedules, and I'm gonna So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The board requested some additional information about best practices for secondary students, as well as some discussion about study halls and the place that they may, place they may serve in our high school settings. I'm gonna start this evening by giving you a little bit of background. We've done a lot of transitioning, both with our middle school schedules and our high school schedules, over the last two years. Each high school was given the opportunity to develop a schedule within a framework of some must-haves, and the 2014-15 schedules that are used by our high schools are shown on this slide. Each teacher at every high school had an opportunity to provide input on their scheduling preference for their classes, as well as input regarding what kind of support they needed to be successful. You'll see that I have... You'll see that I have all of our four high schools displayed here. B H S chose an A-B block, and B H S is found at the bottom of the slide, with a limited number of 45-minute opportunities. You will see that the other three high school models chose models that resulted in students taking five classes per term, while B H S chose an option in which students would generally take eight classes per term. This was not dictated by central office, this was a decision made at the school level. B H S has struggled to move to a position that every student has a lunch period, that every student has the option to take eight periods for credit classes, and that teachers have teaching assignments that are equivalent, meaning that we are not using teacher volunteers based on giving up planning periods without compensation. I have either met with Mr. Kitts or communicated by phone or by email with him specifically about his schedule on many occasions over the last three years. Some dates, May 2013, August 2013, November 2013, August 2014, November 18, 2014, and multiple times in January and February of 2015. Mr. Kitts had the opportunity from each of these meetings to share my feedback with his staff. That was his decision to make. Ms. Weaver is now going to share with you some of the fact-finding that we did this past fall related to the issues with the 2014-2015 schedule at Blacksburg High School.
Ms. Blackburn and I received some concerns from parents as well as from some of you about the schedule at Blacksburg High School this year, and so we looked into the concerns that we heard to try to find out what we could do to improve the schedule going forward. So we looked at the implementation at other schools because, as you know, all four high schools were implementing a new schedule this year. So we looked at the other schools to determine if it was a universal problem that everyone was having or if it was something specific to Blacksburg High School, and what I found was that it was specific to Blacksburg High School. They were the only school that had a large number of students enrolled in student aid or other non-credit-bearing classes. That wasn't something that other schools utilized, a study hall or a student aid. And Blacksburg High School had a significant number, significantly higher percentage of students who didn't have full schedules to start the year than our other high schools had. So then I looked at the staffing and the elective course seat availability at Blacksburg High School to make sure that they had enough staff, that if every student wanted to take eight classes, they had enough staff to do so, and that there were enough seats available in their elective course offerings, and determined that they did. And so then we decided to go directly to the students. At that time, Blacksburg had, I think, about 250 students enrolled in student aid, and so we prepared a survey and asked each of them to take it to try to get feedback directly from them about why they were taking student aid. We asked them things like, did they want to take eight classes? Did they have after-school jobs, extracurricular activities, that they wanted to have more time during the day in a student aid situation to work on things? And what we got back from them was that that wasn't the case. There were only 8% of them that said they didn't want to take classes, take eight classes. The majority of students said that they did want to take eight classes, but they weren't able to, and the next question we asked them was why not? Only 30% indicated that the class was full. The remainder said that they wanted to take eight classes, but they just couldn't make
The school's most recent request has been to use study hall as a standard course offering on the registration sheet for all students' grades 9 through 12, with a strong recommendation from the school on scheduling struggling students into study hall. I have denied the request, and I'll speak a little bit more about my rationale for doing so a little later in my presentation. As a result of my denial of the broad-based use of study hall as a non-credit option for all students, the P T S O put out a broadly distributed request to parents to start a letter-writing or email-writing campaign in support of study hall at B H S for the 15-16 school year. I actually received some very limited feedback from parents and from one teacher at B H S. In total, I heard from 11 people, 10 parents, which included 10 parents and one teacher from out of the over 1,150 families who attend B H S. Two people who contacted me indicated that the option wasn't needed by their child but might be helpful for somebody else's child. One parent responder no longer has students in school but thought it might be a good option for some students. One teacher contacted me and indicated that in the past, there was a point in time when basic education students at B H S were allowed to access the special education program for credit academic lab as an additional study opportunity. The teacher feedback was that it became a dumping ground for students who did not really want to have a study time but who needed to be assigned somewhere, and they ended up in the academic lab. Ms. Weaver will now share with you the survey results based on the December 2014 Schedule Survey that was available online for Montgomery County Public Schools senior high school
Since we're in the first year of implementation of the new schedule, we sent a survey and we asked parents, teachers, and students to participate in the survey similar to what we did with middle school last year to try and see how people felt about the schedule so that we could adjust going forward to make tweaks. So I've shared with you the data that was specific to Blacksburg High School. 72% of their students and 78% of the Blacksburg High School parents felt that the schedule met their child's academic needs. These were the highest numbers reported across the division. They were the most satisfied with their schedule. 73% of Blacksburg parents felt that the A-B was the appropriate option. If you remember, there were several options when you were doing the hybrid schedule. You could incorporate semester block classes, A-B classes, or 45-minute classes. So Blacksburg High School parents felt that A-B was the best fit for their needs. Next was 45 minutes, and last was semester four-by-four options.
So after hearing from a few parents and because of the continuing conversation about the requests from the school to have study halls, I asked Mr. Kitts if he would please put his proposal in writing because although it had been talked about quite a bit, I had never received a written proposal until January 21st when I requested it. This was the first written plan provided on this topic. The schedule request is shown on the screen, and I'm going to briefly address each point of the plan, and then I'll ask Ms. Weaver to comment a little bit later on what we consider best practices for secondary school schedules. Point one. Student criteria for selection. This course would be open to any student that did not want to take eight classes. It would be highly recommended for students who struggle academically or who have failed to pass S O L courses. The plan does not include any mention of how parental or teacher engagement would be involved with the selection of this course for a student. Even more importantly, from my perspective, is the emphasis on struggling students, and I find it to be very problematic. The students prioritized for enrollment are the students who most need direct instruction by highly qualified expert teachers. This is especially true for our ninth and 10th grade students. Point two. The expectation would be that students worked quietly and the room functioned as a time to gain extra academic support or work on schoolwork. Students work quietly in an academically supported environment. Students, especially struggling students, need consistent support from a subject area specialist. Blacksburg High School originally proposed that these study halls would serve 100 students, supervised by two teachers for 45-minute periods or four teachers during one 90-minute block with a two-day rotation of in-charged teachers. Therefore, students would experience up to 12 different teachers as a supervisor of the study hall over a one-week period. After I indicated in November 2014 that under no terms would I accept a 100-student-station study hall, the school modified its approach and reduced the student numbers to 30 per section, but is still supervised by a rotation of teachers doing a duty assignment for 45 minutes at a time, at best inconsistent and not likely the subject area experts needed by these students. Point three. Blacksburg High School would like to run two sections of study hall during each block, a maximum of 60 kids per block, 30 in each section during each block day. This would include a total of 16 sections of study hall and would be staffed by certified teachers as a duty period. The Blacksburg High School plan estimates a maximum of 16 sections of study hall with 30 students in a section supervised on a rotational basis by teachers on an alternating day schedule as a duty period. The plan does not support relationship building, nor does it place a priority on providing help to students from an appropriate subject area specialist. Further, the school and some speakers have declared this as a revenue-neutral plan. Since teachers in basic programs are allocated to schools on the basis of 132 student seats per teacher, I would say to you that B H S then no longer needs the teacher allocation for those 512 students who are being covered by a duty period and a teacher on assignment. This equates to approximately four teacher units valued at $63,800 per teacher unit or a possible cost avoidance to the school division of $255,200. However, I remain convinced that this cost avoidance is not in the best interest of students. It is in the best interest of our students for them to be served in the classes that you are providing with a certified teacher in appropriate content areas. At this time, Ms. Weaver will share some practices that are considered best practice.
As Ms. Blackburn mentioned, Mr. Kitts' proposal included targeting the struggling students for inclusion in study hall. I agree that this is absolutely the right group of students to address through research-based best practices, but not necessarily with the best way to address those needs. Two things that Blacksburg High School has been addressing over the last couple of years, in 2013-14, 2014-15, Blacksburg High School has been mandated to address their subgroup population performance in their school improvement plan for missing federal accountability benchmarks. This year, it was with their students with disability in math, and they were the only high school who missed that benchmark. Another concern for Blacksburg High School has been their exclusion from the U.S. News and World Report Best High School ranking. That's something that they are very proud of and have worked hard to achieve. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about why they missed that ranking. Best High Schools is a three-step process. Two of the steps are ensuring that schools serve their students well, and the last is to make sure that they're preparing students to be college-ready. You have to make it through each step to even receive a ranking, and so step one is looking at your disadvantaged students. Blacksburg High School's disadvantaged students did not perform how they would statistically be expected to perform. They basically come up with a score for what you would expect at the state, and those students didn't reach that benchmark, and so Blacksburg High School isn't even eligible to be ranked. So although their challenge score, the last part of the score, which is how college-ready Blacksburg High School is preparing their students to be, that score is actually much higher than it was the last time they did appear on the ranking. So their overall academics have improved and are doing much better, but unfortunately, U.S. News and World Reports only allows you to be ranked if your disadvantaged students in your subgroup populations are performing at the level you'd expect them to or better. So these are things that they've been working very hard on to improve ways that their struggling students can be successful. So I wanted to share with you best practices for how to address student needs. I'm sharing with you a particular study from the National High School Alliance, Academic Intervention to Help Students Meet Rigorous Standards, and there are several keys that they point out to help struggling students. So I've just summarized those for you. Their first recommendation is to offer accelerated learning options. They found that struggling students are motivated more when they can see a tangible result to their work, and so they recommend providing at-risk students with credit opportunities. And I'll talk in a minute about available options we have that do meet these recommendations. The second recommendation that they make is to offer extended learning programs to give students time to catch up, to have additional time to work on a subject area, particularly in English and Algebra. Their next recommendation is to provide personalized learning environments, and they recommend focusing on small learning communities, either having teams or small mentor groups or having students' schedules built around their CTE programs. And their last recommendation is to incorporate literacy in all their curriculum. If students get better at reading, they get better in all their subject areas. And then I also summarized for you some information from the National Council for Teachers in Mathematics, since that was the area that Blacksburg missed the benchmark in this particular year. And the number-one thing, which is what we focused on often, is providing them with the best systematic and explicit instruction by highly qualified teachers in their classrooms Yes. One of the recommendations, one of the recommendations is a personalized learning environment. So I wanted to take a minute to reference the article that was shared with you last week that was talking about, the title of the article was "Study Hall." It was describing a program at Oakton High School in Fairfax County. So I looked up the program to provide you with some more information. Oakton High School is on an A-B block schedule. One period every other day, students have an advisory period and two periods that they call Cougar Time. The way that Oakton High School describes that program is that it's an enrichment intervention period in which all students, every student in the building participates, every teacher in the building participates at the same time. Part of the time is developed on doing advisory activities. A lot of the things we've been talking about wanting to include, things like academic and career planning, having an adult in the building to check their progress on grades, and then Cougar Time is an opportunity for kids to do remediation, to get homework help. It works well because, as I mentioned, everyone in the building is off at the same time. So if I need help in Algebra, my Algebra teacher is available at that time to help We did talk last year at the high school level about trying to implement some of these things because the primary schools that we looked at to see what schools were performing well, most of them were on an A-B block schedule. However, it is worth noting that all of those schedules only offer students the opportunity to have seven credits. They have no opportunity for students to earn eight credits, and that was one of the mandates that I was tasked with, was making sure that all students had an opportunity to take eight credits. And so we weren't able to implement the model the way that Fairfax and Loudon are implementing it because we had to have the opportunity for eight credits. And it's also worth noting that we have student advisory periods in most of our middle schools. Some of you might be familiar with Titan Time or with Flip at Charlesville Middle, and so those are programs that we have in place. And when we talked about it as high school principals, I think everybody was very leery to implement something that was of, would take so much work to make sure that we had really high-quality options available for our students because, I mean, you can all imagine with every student and every teacher in the building participated, if you didn't have things very structured and very well organized, it could become a waste of time in a hurry. And so we felt like when we were trying to implement a new schedule, trying to also add enrichment intervention period and advisory period was a little more than we felt like we could tackle successfully in year one, but it is something that we discussed. Okay, so now I wanted to talk to you about the opportunities, some of which you just heard from our last presentation, but some of the opportunities that we have available for students that do meet very well with the recommendations that I've shared with you. The first one are double-blocked classes. That meets extended learning times, incorporating literacy, systematic explicit instruction, and a variety of the other recommendations. This has been a very successful practice in our school systems. Students have the opportunity to extend their learning across the year. So students are taking, for example, English 9 for 90 minutes all year long, they're taking Algebra 1 90 minutes for all year long. We've even expanded it, Blacksburg High School this year has expanded to include a 12th-grade option. option, so we have some students that weren't able to pass their Reading, Literature, and Research SOL in 11th grade. So in 12th grade, they have a year-long English class, so they can work on their English 12 curriculum and also get that structured remediation during the day writing class with highly qualified teacher. You've heard about these interventions a variety of times, but they have been very successful at our middle school and our high school level, Read 180 and Math 180 for catching up our students. Those are very structured program that has to be offered 90 minutes a day with a qualified teacher who's an expert. Remediation programs are another way that Blacksburg High School has met the needs of their students. In the past, students picked up packets, and it was up to them to study from those packets or to meet with teachers if they had time after school or to try and catch teachers. This last year, and they're continuing this year, the math department has built a program during the day so that they pull students out and work with them and make sure that students are getting the extra support they need. That's been a practice in place at our other high schools for several years. Blacksburg has lots of dual enrollment and CTE course offerings, which students take advantage of, and so that's another opportunity for our students who might be planning to attend community college to get a leg up at, obviously, significant cost savings as well. And Blacksburg has had a very, implemented a very successful mentoring program with their ninth-grade students last year. Mr. Stewart worked very hard to identify students who were struggling and to pair them up with a mentor who had volunteered in the building, who would touch base with them. I actually just saw a request today from one of the mentors that's planning a field trip with their mentor students to celebrate the success that they've had. So these are all things that are available within our division that fit very well within these recommendations of how to help struggling students. Blacksburg High School is pretty early in implementing most of them, but all the feedback I've heard from Mr. Kit and from the teachers is that they feel like these things have been very successful for them, and they want to continue to utilize them and expand their use of them.
So bottom line, we really think that, in many ways, Blacksburg High School made some steps forward in some of the things that they're doing with their students this year, especially some of their struggling students. And so I ask or stated for Mr. Kit what my expectations for Blacksburg High School's schedule for 2015-2016 was, and it says follows. Open school year 2015-2016 at Blacksburg High School with student schedules built around individual students' first choice and alternance. Complete the entire process within the parameters of the secondary scheduling timeline. You all have seen that timeline, I shared it with you. In fact, one of the reasons we created the timeline is because there had been a lot of conversation about the need to find some consistencies around when kids registered and what the process looked like and what parents might expect. Resolve schedule conflicts early so that students have a full-day schedule created from their registration input before the beginning of school. That's my first expectation. My second expectation is that they implement the existing options available to provide students who need support with opportunities to earn credit, with intensive interventions, proven curriculum such as the things that Ms. Weaver has just been speaking about, quality instruction, supplemented where needed with some of the non-credit options that we already have that are primarily available for 11th and 12th grade students, and those are the non-credit early release, the late arrival, the student aid, and a study hall for specific students. We've done it for a long time, and do it with fidelity, but there are guidelines for doing it. The guidelines for the study hall are that the student be taking three dual enrollment or AP classes, and those are the students who are carrying the heaviest academic loads and may need that, whereas the struggling student probably needs the direct guided instruction as opposed to the independent approach to learning. And finally, the third point, explore using tablets to offer economics and personal finance to rising 10th-grade students as a monitored independent study within a large group setting. This would allow scheduling flexibility, and it would free up the technology resources within the building that are now being used by students throughout the day to complete that personal finance course. Ms. Weaver will now speak about the steps that we've taken to improve the scheduling experience for all schools, including Blacksburg High School.
Last year, we implemented a division-wide registration timeline to try and make sure, as Ms. Blackburn mentioned, that schools were having unique, having similar experiences for when students registered, what kind of data we were looking at, heard the middle school team talk about placement data and trying to make sure that we were getting kids in the right place so that we weren't having to move them once they got there, that they could experience success right away. So we tried to put all of those things into a timeframe. So last year was the first year that we did that. Some pieces of it went very well, other pieces of it, we felt like there was room for improvement. So this year, I met with the principals, the supervisors, and the guidance counselors to talk about steps and timelines with a special priority on how we can make sure that students have complete schedules before the beginning of school, so we're not trying to address those things the first week of school. The registration timeline was developed, and it's been shared with you a few different times this year, and I attached it again to the presentation for you to reference. You'll notice the important dates to revise course offerings, student registration sheets, et cetera. Ms. Karan mentioned last time that there is a process that we go through for you all to consider new courses and to approve them and those things, and I did want to point out that those deadlines have all passed. We're at the stage now that students have already received registration materials, they've already selected courses, we're at the end of that window. It initially was February 27, and we had to add a little bit of extra time due, obviously, to the snow days, but we're very near the end of our registration periods. We've scheduled our consultant from Power School to come and support the principals as they develop their schedules at the end of March. So if we were going to consider different scheduling models or different course offerings or different options for students to register, that would need to be something that we incorporated into this process next year so that then it could be implemented for the 16-17 school year. I did want to point out some of the key changes. These are particularly at Blacksburg High School from the registration timeline that are different. We asked them to clarify in the registration materials the importance of alternate course selections, because we wanted to make sure that parents and students understood that they needed to pick those courses seriously and when they picked them that we would use them in scheduling. I'm sure you all remember, I remember very well, all the way through my college experience, having those courses lined up, if the first one was full, what my backup selection would be. So we asked them to clarify that. We asked them to include a guidance counselor on their scheduling team. In the past, that's been an administrative function at Blacksburg High School, and this year, going forward, it'll be a team process. We have scheduled the consultant that'll be working with us in Power School for after all these registration activities have happened. Last year, that, we did the same thing, but it was more of a training experience for them, and they didn't get enough hands-on support from the personnel. They were actually trying to build their schedule, was sort of like they learned how to do it, and then they returned at least to try and do it on their own without a lot of support. So this year, we're scheduling that at the end of March so that they actually can develop their schedule during those two days with someone there who can help them if they need it. And the last thing, Ms. Blackburn already referenced, is that we'll publish schedules to students by early July so that counselors and administrators have the summer to resolve conflict so that students arrive with full schedules rather than working on those schedules at the beginning of the year.
So we've tried to capture the essence of the conversation that took place at the board meeting last time, and certainly if you have other questions or things that you'd like for us to clarify, we'd be happy to do that.
I know that you mentioned that only a few parents had contacted you. My concern, being a high school parent, is all the students that don't have a voice, and I think that needs to be a consideration.
The students who don't have a voice, meaning, because I had, you mean that students were not personally surveyed?
I'm saying that students like whose parents won't write to you and speak up and come speak at a session.
Well, the newsletters that went out from the Parent Teacher Student Organization are received, is my understanding, by households and are available also to students, as is the online petition, which has 50 signatures. And in those cases, students did not choose to access it either, but certainly, we did survey students about their satisfaction with the A/B schedule, and that was included in the information that Ms. Weaver included, and we did have quite a bit of student participation. In fact, over half of the students who did participate were Blacksburg High School students.
I have a few questions, and I'm kind of, I'll try to go in order with the presentation, but, and I apologize if they're not as clear, but I, maybe I was wrong, but I didn't find this presentation on our board update, our board docs. I looked early this morning, and it wasn't here.
It was not posted and was not designed to be posted. It was for information for the board this evening. It wasn't the kind of thing that we would ordinarily give you in advance, but I'll be happy to post it after this meeting, along with our notes will come to the board as well that you can refer back to.
Just easier for me to ask questions when I can study things ahead of time, I have to say, and also for Blacksburg High School, parents and staff that were interested in this topic to look at it, to see what was going to be presented tonight, I think would have been helpful. The beginning of the presentation, you talked about the scheduling from last fall and how Blacksburg High School was the only school that had such a tremendous amount of conflicts and concerns. I was just wondering, I know our budget season last spring lagged on mainly because of the state and other things, but it was not decided till early summer, late spring, really, what kind of staffing changes were going to be made, and was Blacksburg High School one of the few high schools that, like, for example, decided they weren't, were told they wouldn't be having computer science as, and some other things? And so was that part of the scheduling, I don't know, problems in the fall when kids signed up for these classes and then they weren't there?
I'll let Ms. Weaver talk about the timeline, but as far as decisions about what classes are offered and not offered, and generally, that decision is made at the school, at the school level. Now, obviously, we're not going to allow a school to abandon a high-cost career and technical lab without some great conferencing with us, but the decision about a computer science class was made at the school level based on their staffing and what they viewed as the priorities for that available staffing. I'll let Ms. Weaver address when they actually got their staffing amounts, but the expectation is that, once you finish the scheduling process, that you will begin trying to resolve those conflicts that you see. Just because the scheduling is finished doesn't mean that you don't have access to your 1,150 student schedules, and you can see where there are blanks in those schedules. You can run a report that says, please give me a list of students that have less than eight course requests, and you can begin the process right then to resolve those issues, and you do not have to wait until they show up to get, to get the first day of school. Jennifer can talk about when they got their allocations.
Their final allocations were late in the spring, and it was difficult for principals to move forward on developing their master schedule until much later. Like I said, now we'll have their master schedules mostly done by the end of March. Last year, it was much closer to the end of May before we were able to do that. However, they did know, they had presented to me, and we had a tentative list of cuts very, pretty early in the process, I think it was about January, as soon as we found out those 11 positions were under consideration, we had already developed the list of who that would be, and schools had planned around them, so they didn't have final information and weren't able to finalize things, but they certainly had a very good idea of what they were expecting to reduce. And they tried to make those decisions whenever possible based on low course enrollments, and so the courses that they selected, for the most part, were things that had the lowest student enrollment, and so it impacted the least amount of students. So, you know, it could have had some impact, but as I mentioned, you know, CHS had very similar cuts and went through the exact same process and timeline, and they didn't have open slots at the beginning of the year the way that Blacksburg did.
That was going to be my question, the same, those same things happen in all high schools, right? Correct?
Correct.
They can't get it, then they have to move on to their next, their second choice, and that's typical with all four high schools, it's not just one. And, you know, I'm just a little concerned, because it wasn't that long ago we had a group coming forward that wanted their students to be able to not take lunch because they wanted more classes. And, you know, so it's just kind of funny now that we're hearing so much about the students, and even though I was interested in hearing about study hall, then I started kind of thinking, you know, a lot of times it is true, some students do need that time to catch up and do some homework and things like that, but I also understand sometimes students, if they're not governed and they're not driven, then they're just sitting there chit-chatting, and, and sorry if that's a waste of time in today's society where these students have to be on top of everything. And with having a freshman and making schedules, I am seeing that, you know, she's enjoying taking or sometimes having to take because her first choice, you know, and a student that is on top of things and still has to get her second and third choice, culinary arts and things like that, that she would have never chosen if she was not driven to do so. So, you know, I have to say, I tend to agree with the data that you're, that you're showing
Can I continue?
Yeah.
I'd like to understand when a school or a group of people or staff would like to make a change or would like to look into making a change or recommend something, what is the process that our school system has in place to do this instead, I mean, is it just emailing back and forth, making phone calls? Is there a formal process that we have?
There is, and it's described on that timeline, if you look at it. There's a deadline for, it's at the top under Course Catalog. On October 1st, we go through and update any changes that have been made based, those come usually from the state. You all know we get plenty of changes from them that we don't have control over, and then schools present proposals for new courses and staffing requests to me, and then we all meet as supervisors and principals to discuss them. We had a variety of proposals this year. I think, what made it to you, maybe like four of them made it to the school board for approval. Many of them didn't because they were things that we knew there was no possibility we could either staff or provide the equipment for, but Mr. Kit didn't provide me with the study hall proposal as part of that process.
I think you already answered this, how many of Blacksburg families or students completed the survey it was, that you had the data on?
About 58% of the parents who completed the survey were from Blacksburg High School, and the student population was representative of the amount they represent, so parents were a little overrepresented. It was a little more heavy Blacksburg, I think Blacksburg only represents about 38% of the population, but student-wise, we had very good turnout from all of our students. They did it at school, provided the opportunity, so we had very good participation, and we had very good faculty participation at all four high schools as well.
When students get their form to fill out to register for classes, how is it communicated to them that they don't have to, or are they required to put eight classes down on that piece of paper? And you say that there's these other options, or if they have certain requirements, they're, these are available. How do they know that these are available? And from what I'm hearing, that this request isn't all about, I think we use the word a lot during this presentation, remedial students. It's also about other types of students. So how do we meet those needs of those students at the same time with these, your slide, a couple of slides back, these options?
I focused on those options because that was the group that Mr. Kit told me he wanted to focus on. He gave me some additional information, students that had below a 2.0, had failed an SOL, were failing more than one class. So the criteria that he presented to me was struggling students. We have options currently for study hall because the need was for our students, when we offered the college-owned opportunities and started having students take a lot more college-bearing credit, they needed support during the day. And so, you know, we would certainly consider if students needed support because they were involved in extracurricular opportunities or because they had a job, that's why we asked the student aides, this is why you're in this class. And like I said, the data that, with that group, obviously, that's the only group we've ever asked, but that group said, no, that wasn't what they wanted. They wanted to take eight classes and take it well, have opportunity to take them. And so we focused on trying to build a good schedule so that they would have options to take them all. In terms of how students find out about opportunities, you heard the middle school people talk a little bit about the placement process. We collect lots of data, try really hard to pinpoint students who need additional support, and two things happen. They receive communication from the principals telling them of the opportunity that we want them to take advantage of. The other thing that happens at the second, well, happens K-12, are the SOL meetings for any students that fail an SOL, the principal meets with them directly to talk about options that are available to them. And then for things like the double-boxed classes, they're recommended. And so for math, for example, students below Algebra II are recommended for math placement. So we tell students II are recommended for math placement, so we tell students that based on the profile that they presented, we have opportunities available for them to get extra support in math, so that's what shows up automatically on the registration. For English, they get teacher recommendations, so their, their current teacher recommends, or like I said, an example of the English 11, the students who had failed were recommended to take a year-long English 12. So that's the, that's only been in place really well-functioning last year, and this year will be the second year that we've done it that way, but our middle schools and high schools have worked really well together to try and collect a lot of data about our students and make sure that they're put in the right places, so that's a pretty systematic process.
So when they complete this form, a parent is required to sign off on this form?
Correct.
So if this were to be implemented, this study hall option, a parent would have to sign off and approve that a student put that on their sheet, correct?
Correct.
We don't do anything to specifically be sure that every single student's parent signed off on that application form, and many times, unfortunately, students do, as students will do, when it's due, they sign their parent's name at the bottom of it and turn it in, but the form definitely does have a place for parent's signature, it also has a place for the alternates to be listed, and it also has the indicators of choose one of these, choose one of these, choose this, based on your grade level placement.
The Power School consultant, is that only going to be used at Blacksburg High School and everywhere? What's the cost of this consultant?
That's for all secondary schools, last year, if you remember, was the first year we had scheduled with Power School, and so it was brand-new to everyone in our division, we didn't have anyone who was an expert in scheduling, and it's a very complicated process, obviously, we're seeing the results of that, and so we also got feedback from the principals last year that having that particular person, he is actually a person who does scheduling in his school division, and so they said that he was an expert and requested that we bring him back this year. Their other request was to do it after they had collected all the information so they could actually be scheduling, so that's why we changed the timeframe. Mr. Goodwin works with the consultant on the contract, so I'm not sure how much it costs, I'm sure he can provide you that.
But it's scheduled for March 30th and 31st, I believe, and all those scheduling teams are involved.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm, may, I'm sorry if I missed it, is there provisions in what you have to be able to help with, you know, student athletes, people who are in band, who have to work in the evenings, who don't have transportation to be able to get extra assistance or make up tasks, et cetera?
The, the extra assistance, like I said, we've tried to handle by identifying students who need extra assistance and scheduling it into their day, so it isn't random and hit and miss, we know that they've got a qualified person who's working with them every day all year long, and then, like I said, we tried to narrow down the area to focus on by asking the students why they took those classes, and that was one of the questions, are you an athlete, do you have an after-school job, do you need more time during the day to work on things, and like I said, the response from students was that that wasn't the case, that they wanted to take eight classes, there was only 8% that said that they didn't want to take eight classes, so we focused in other areas.
There, do you have any other questions?
I'm okay.
No? Board members, any other questions, comments?
I, I do. In the November 13th, Report of the External Review Done of Montgomery County Public Schools, the statement came out that the external review team had concerns about board members becoming too involved in the day-to-day operations of the district. Results of stakeholder feedback surveys reveal governance and leadership as the weakest area of this district. It also said that clarity of roles and responsibilities of the board members and a better understanding of how to perform these roles was, and responsibilities, would only enhance the collective efforts of the stakeholders. This has been exactly what they said we should not be doing. You, you have made this a very, very informative presentation, but my feeling is you're presenting it to the wrong people. We're not making a decision on this, I don't understand why this had to be done, except you made it very informative. This is not the place for things like this. I don't know what else we have to do to drive that nail home when the external review tells us that we shouldn't be doing this, and here we are knee-deep in it and probably going to get worse before it gets better. The answer to the question, how do we resolve these problems, we don't do it at this table, I don't believe. We do it, me communicating with you, me communicating with the people involved, and we try to work something out. I don't even want to think about the time and effort you folks put into this presentation, it was just an amount of time and effort that's beyond anything. I, I just think that this board, and I apologize, but I really think that this board has to take a very close look at itself, and what in the world is Blacksburg's study hall situation coming before the complete board as an issue, when, in my opinion, I don't think there's anything we can do about it, or more than likely, as a board, are going to do anything about it. Now, I'm only going on what I read from the review, but I really think that this is, I, I think the microscope has gotten so focused that we just can't see beyond that, and I think we need to take a close look at ourselves and figure out what is this all about, and I apologize.
Any other comments, board members? Ms. Blackburn, before you do, I do want to make a comment. I do, in large part, agree with what Mr. Ivors just said, this is micromanagement to the nth degree, and it is not what we're about. We entrust you as a superintendent to make tough calls, and we follow your lead. I do feel, because it was brought to our attention, several, in several avenues, via email, via the people who spoke last week, that it was something that we at least needed to address. It's been addressed. To me, I don't know that we need to do anything further with it other than entrust you and your leadership to move forward with whatever decisions need to be made with this. I do also under, wonder how much time you spent on this, but it needed to be done, and I appreciate you taking the time to do it. I think it's been thoroughly vetted, and I commend you for doing it, and I will move forward with it unless there is any other comments to be made.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well, I'll just say a quick thing, that since I'm the one that have brought this up multiple times, that I don't believe that it's micromanaging to ask for information for clarification on topics, especially when it has to do with many more than 11 people asking for this information and request, and the communication process of understanding how this all is going about. It hasn't been clear to me, and I wasn't asking to make a decision on anything, but I was asking for information, and I don't call that micromanaging. Thank you.
Okay.
Our next item this evening is the Budget Planning Update. You have on the dais, a copy of the adjusted 2015-2016 budget, it's been adjusted to reflect the additional revenue that came out of the end of the legislative session. The net increase was $445,250, generally tied to the 1.5% salary increase. What that means is, just like with eLearning Backpack, if you use the money for what it's designated for, you get the money, if you don't, you don't get it, and the same is true with the salary money that's just been voted by the legislature. Thus, the deficit in our needs-based budget has been reduced to about $3.5 million is what it would take to fund the entire needs-based budget. We're still evaluating the implementing procedures for the salary plan, and I'll bring you more information at your next meeting.
Thank you. Board members, any questions concerning the budget?
And how much was that over what we were kind of guessing?
I think I said $401,000 last week, and it turned out to be $455,000.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was the, one house had around $450,000 and one had $401,000, and this is where we ended up, so. There's some other little minor changes on there, you can see them reflected with the pluses and minuses on the budget sheet.
Let me take a look at the next. The next thing on the agenda is the school board retreat dates. I asked Mrs. Blackburn to include this so that we could pull our calendars out and actually schedule a retreat. We did not have one last year, we all know, we had difficulty with schedules abounding last year, it is my goal and intention for us to schedule a retreat date before we leave tonight. I think most of you should have already received the email that was sent out with some proposed dates that were discussed at our board agenda prep meeting last week, and I open it up for you right now to make any suggestions or comment on when you're available for those three dates or any other that you would have. I do want to say this, part of what we want to, I think, accomplish at the retreat will be to help guide Mrs. Blackburn with some of her goals for the upcoming year, and with that in mind, we need to have that in place by July 1st, which is also the time that we need to have her current, or what will be her current evaluation ready as well. So I leave it up to you, let's start discussing these dates, you see the, the ones that were suggested before or in the email were May 29th and 30th, June 12th and 13th, and then the last one was June 26th and 27th.
I think one of those right away can be eliminated, Jamie has a problem with, which the maid?
The last one.
The June 26th, 27th?
The year's class reunion, so.
June 26th, 27th?
Right.
So we eliminate that.
And if I may too, I had sent out an email, you know, other times we talked about the retreats, I had made clear, I cannot take Friday and Saturday off both, I just can't do it, it just won't allow me to do it, so if you want to start at midday on Friday, you'll have to start it without me because I can't do it. I can be there by 3:15, but that's as early as I can get there, it's just impossible for me to take both days off, I just can't do it.
Okay.
Fridays are tough for me too, because it's a workday.
I thought your wording, Mr. Lyons, was the majority of the people attend, so why would we mark off one date with already?
Yeah, and I, I think we need to be careful of that, you know, we are, part of the reason that we did not have a retreat last year is because we never came to, to a complete 100% consensus on a date, and the wording that I did stress in there is that the majority of us need to be able to be there, so we're going to choose the date with the least amount of conflict.
And I have a big concern with that, because if we're going to have a board retreat, then it's a board retreat, not with most board members that can attend. If we're going to be making decisions as to goals we set for the superintendent to achieve, how we move forward with different issues in the district, how we work better together as a board, then we need the whole board there. One of the things that I have said many times since we've gotten to a, a situation where our retreats are getting closer and, and into the summer and late spring, when I first came on this board, we had retreats in February. We set our dates for the retreat at the end of the year before, you know, I, I asked at, I think, the first or the second board meeting that we look at dates for the retreat. So if we have a retreat and we don't have board members that are there, then we just had a board meeting to do what? Because I'm going to tell you, if there are decisions that are being made and I'm not going to be able to be there, or other board members aren't going to be able to be there that are going to impact this district, I'm going to be not happy and not going to be agreeing with whatever's going to be proposed.
Well, then I would say to that, every board member needs to be at every meeting that's scheduled, because decisions get made at every meeting, but we all have times where we have to miss meetings. This is an additional meeting that we're scheduling.
No.
And...
A retreat is a different meeting, it's a different meeting, just by that sense, as a retreat, and the things that you said, we're setting goals for the superintendent.
Okay.
And I have never, in all my years on this board, I have never had a retreat where board members weren't there, except when there were medical emergencies and board members were not there, that's the only time.
Then I would suggest we should make every effort to be able to set a date for the retreat, because we couldn't last time, that's why last year we couldn't have one.
Yeah, and that's because it got pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, and it wasn't necessarily because of all board members, it was because of the situation we were in dealing with, with the chair.
And, and I hate that I can't, the 28th, but that's the one, and everybody that can witness, out of all the meetings we've ever had, that's the one conflict I've had in all these years, is that one weekend, so I'm, I'm not going to apologize to that.
We can look into the other two.
But, how about the other two?
Right, and is it possible, I don't know how it would help you, Jamie, but is it possible to do it a little bit later in, on Friday, go, you know, from maybe...
And that's what we did last year.
Three or four o'clock till, till later, nine?
Two years ago, because I have not been a part of a retreat.
If I may, board members, just as historical reference, typically, these retreats start in the late afternoon, the earliest I've ever seen, I think, was four o'clock one time, but they start later, we usually provide dinner, and then they move into Saturday, and depending on the agenda you set for the retreat, depends on if it's a half-day on Saturday or if it goes all day, and Ms. Franklin can tell me if I'm wrong, she's certainly been here much longer than me, but that's what we've scheduled for you in the time that I've been here.
And they need to start it later than that, but anyway.
That, that would certainly work much better for me.
And, and also, I think we need to stress the fact that it's, it's a board team-building, so to build a team, everyone's got to be there.
Yes.
Okay, so we have dates on the table, can, can we do the May 29th and 30th date?
No, I can't.
You cannot?
Mm-mm.
How about June 12th and 13th?
I can't, I can do that last date that was listed.
The June 12th and 13th work for me.
I'm sorry?
The June 12th and 13th work for me.
Okay.
Are those the only three weekends that...
No, I'm, I'm going to go through them all.
Okay.
June 19th and 20th.
Hold on.
Nope.
No?
Wait, I'll be there.
What do you, you're chan, you're going through every weekend now instead of the three you listed?
Yes.
Okay.
June 5th and 6th, we skipped that one.
Nope.
I really studied and thought about those three weekends, so I can't talk about all the rest of the summer right now, you know, in the past, we've done doodle polls that work really well, if you want to just put every weekend in doodle poll and we can all fill it out.
I don't think we determined anything last year except that we can never meet.
Yeah, well, we can determine that too.
If we push this into July, that means we're still going to have to have extra meetings in June to do the superintendent's evaluation as well, so keep that in mind. May or June, we will have to do the evaluation.
And that's normal.
What about March or April?
I mean, since I've been on the board, it's been normal.
Before it gets to May, what about March or April, is that impossible?
Depending upon the weekend.
How much of an inconvenience is it for us, for folks to do it, like, two evenings?
No. April 10th and the 11th.
I don't like that idea better.
What about 10th, Penny was saying 10th and the 11th?
Of April?
Or 1st and 2nd of May?
I wouldn't be able to on the 10th, I have pager weekend.
Okay, what about 17th, 18th, 24th, 25th?
Nope, nope.
No.
1st and 2nd of May.
So what if we did do the evening thing, that might be a little easier than...
Well, what about the 1st, 2nd of May?
Okay with that.
1st and 2nd of May works for me.
Works for me.
I could do that.
Bingo.
Everyone good?
Well, not everybody yet. Hold on.
I'm okay.
I don't know. I can get back to you on that.
Everyone, except for Ms. Woosley, is a yay? Ms. Blackburn, does that work for you?
As long as you tell me what you want on the agenda. That's just right around the corner. Whether you plan to facilitate it among yourselves, or whether you need a facilitator, and what you would like to talk about.
Okay.
And we could start later in the evening on Friday?
Later in the afternoon, that is. Yeah. Four has been the earliest we've, I've ever seen us do it. Usually, it's dinner, and then we start and have a few hours in the evening.
That's fine for me, too. The later, the better.
I can get there by four.
Okay. So we'll pencil in the 1st and 2nd of May? Yep. How quickly can you give us an answer on that?
I can, tomorrow.
Okay.
The 29th and the 30th of May didn't work? I can't remember if we?
No, someone said no on 29th and 30th?
I think Ms. Woosley said.
Yes.
Of May?
Okay, 1st and 2nd, as of right now. We will confirm that tomorrow. Now, tackling the agenda part of that.
Can I just, because if it doesn't work, I'd like to have an alternative that we can try to go back to?
Yeah, let's pick an alternative also.
So was May 15th and 16th, did we talk about that?
I think Sarah said that was an option.
May 15th is Blacksburg High School graduation evening?
No, that's on the 22nd.
The 22nd.
22nd and 23rd. No, wait a minute. Graduations, last day of school I have is the 22nd, correct? And so the high school graduations are the 15th and 16th?
No, it's the 22nd.
The 23rd.
Yeah, those are already set, all right? Graduations are already set.
So back on the 15th, 16th?
So the 15th, 16th?
That's a possibility. It's okay with me.
As an alternate?
Mm-hmm.
And just for my own?
Well, wait a minute. Maybe it's okay.
I'll look into both of those and get back to you.
And just as from my own knowledge, Saturdays, what time do you usually start?
Probably start at 9:00 a.m. Is that typically what we've done?
We can certainly start whenever the pleasure of the board. Typically, it's breakfast at 8:00.
Yeah.
8:00?
Early.
Okay.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be over in our conference rooms at the county offices.
Where?
The meeting room's right outside my office. We're going to meet in this building.
And I would suggest, if both of these dates work, that we take the furthest out, the 15th and the 16th.
Yeah.
A little more time to plan.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that will give it a little more preparation time.
Okay. We have a date and an alternate date, or two dates to choose from. Agenda, we have a meeting place, obviously. Agenda, board members, what are some things that you would like to see on the agenda?
Team building?
Okay.
Goals for the district.
I'm sorry?
Goals for the district.
Goals for the district.
Superintendent.
I agree.
Superintendent. Superintendent evaluation and indicators of each standard, so we can have some indicators selected. So when we were looking each standard, we will know what we are looking.
Well, we had some discussion about personality analysis, too. I don't know if that's something that the board wishes to do, but because of just something with the board building-type thing, I think that goes along with helping everybody understand how, why people make the decisions they do, and it...
Okay.
Goes along with that.
Well, along that same line, again, back to what the internal review said, clarity of roles. I mean, we've got to understand what a role of a board member is.
But we want to make sure that we don't overlap with all of the five-session training that we're already doing, too.
Right.
Which we have. Our next one is next week. We will have completed all of those, or three of four of those?
That'll be the second.
I know. By this time, by retreat date, we will have, that'll be three of four we've done, correct?
Uh, well.
They are all here.
Depends on which date.
The last one is June 9th.
Okay.
So we'll be done with March 10th and April 14th one, but there will be one left.
Okay.
So we might have covered a lot of that.
Well, clarity of roles, I think, you know, that, a lot of that is being discussed in those, so that may...
Considering a self-evaluation of the board.
Hmm, right. I think that some of that is going to be addressed in some of the training as well, is the self-evaluation.
Since we have a new school board member, also, I don't know if we need to talk about this, the new evaluation system for the superintendent.
Yeah, it was one of the things that I had written down, the superintendent evaluation and the indicators, talking about both of those. I definitely would say, correct me, board members, if I'm wrong, probably priority in all of those things that we just listed, our goals for the district. And it looks like, based upon the things that were said, some kind of team-building, personality, us working together as a team, being a lot more defined in our roles, something along those lines. And then, the superintendent evaluation, indicators, those types of things would be the third on that priority list. Everyone agree to that? Did I give you enough to start with, Mrs. Blackburn? Okay. As far as making, do we, I think one of your other questions was to, do we have someone lead that, or do we try to do that in and of ourselves? Board members, any thoughts to that?
I think it's best to get an expert in to work with us.
Saves time.
How was it done in the past? We always said some?
I've seen it done where the superintendent leads it, where we had facilitation. Quite frankly, I would suggest some facilitation.
Yeah.
Just to help move things along.
It'll be efficient, that's right.
Yeah. And if time is going to be issues, we need to maximize every minute.
Yep. Okay. So you can look into have someone facilitate that for us as well. Any other aspects of this that we're missing? All right, we will wait with Ms. Woosley's date determination factor, and then we will put those on the calendar. Moving on to unfinished business, board members, does anyone have any unfinished business that they would like to address? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Anyone have anything new that they would like to share with the board? And trucking right along, announcements and information. Anyone have an announcement or information that we need to be aware of?
I have one announcement. Just like to announce that I've decided that for this fall, I don't plan on running for school board again. Just kind of want the public to know that, so that people can be planning. It's been an enriching experience, and I do hope other people will come forward to experience this experience. And I do hope to find many opportunities in the future to serve public education. But definitely have 10 more months to go, but wanted the public to know my plans.
Well, thank you for your service preliminarily. We'll definitely acknowledge that more in the future, but thank you. Anyone else? All right, upcoming school board meetings. You see the schedule there. We meet next week for our V S B A professional development session, starting at 6:00 for dinner. Session will start at 6:30. And then our next board meeting, regularly scheduled board meeting, will be May, or I'm sorry, March 17th. And our joint meeting with the board of supervisors, at this point, is still a go for March 30th. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.